Good afternoon, and I'd like to call to order today's Virginia Beach Planning Commission meeting, July 8th, 2020. My name is Dee Oliver, and I am the Chair of the Planning Commission, and welcome to everyone. This morning, before we've got started, I have asked Commissioner Walt to lead us in prayer, and this will be followed by the pledge by Commissioner Edmond.
Thank you. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you today thanking you for your guidance and wisdom. As we begin this hearing today, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. Help us to remember our responsibility to serve our community with great insight, guided by understanding, wisdom, and respect for all. As we make decisions today, help us to promote the common good as we work together for the betterment of our great city. As trusted servants, we seek blessings on our deliberations and on our efforts here. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Walt and Commissioner Edmond. And I have asked Commissioner Klein if she would take time to introduce our members.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am Robin Klein. I'm a social worker representing the Centerville District. To my right, John Costin, retired Virginia Beach Fire Captain, a member, Commissioner at Large. Whitney Graham, real estate developer, representing the Lynnhaven District. Let's see, Mr. Barnes is not here. Mr. David Redmond, Commercial Real Estate, representing the Bayside District. Mr. Michael Inman, an attorney, Commissioner at Large. David Weiner, in Commercial Sales, representing the Kempsville District. Dee Oliver, Funeral Director, Chair and Commissioner at Large. Don Horsley, a farmer and Commissioner at Large. George Alcaraz, a building contractor, representing the Beach District. And Jack Wall, a civil engineer, representing the Rose Hall District.
Thank you. And our Director, Planning Director Bobby DeHan, would you please introduce your staff and also our City Attorney Kay Wilson?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. All right, I have Deputy City Attorney for Land Use Kay Wilson with us. Starting with the planning staff, we have Wadaw, Marshall Coleman, and Bill Lanfair on our current planning team. We have Kevin Kemp, our zoning administrator. And I have a handful of other staff available that will be presenting in other locations, and it's kind of hard to see. We also do want to call Kevin Fairley with our IT Department, who is graciously assisting us with our virtual portion of our meeting. So, nope, I'm sorry, nope, and I missed Summer. And Summer Pables with our zoning division, I'm sorry.
Great. Thank you. And so our first order of business today is Mr. Lanfair is going to read our rules to us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today's meeting is being held both virtually and in person in order to comply with proper social distancing guidelines. The Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the Commission normally conducts its meetings. It is equally important that everyone treat each other and the members of the Commission with respect and civility. The Commission requests that if you have a cellphone, please either silence it or turn it off while in the chamber. This is an abbreviated explanation of the rules. The complete set of rules is located in the front of the Planning Commission Agenda. The following is the order of business for this public hearing. Withdrawals and deferrals. The Chairman will ask if there are any requests to withdraw or defer an item on the agenda. Consideration of these requests will be made first. Consent Agenda. The second order of business is the consideration of the consent agenda, which are those items that the Planning Commission believe are unopposed and which have favorable staff recommendations. Regular Agenda. The Commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. Speakers in support or opposition of an agenda item will have three minutes to speak unless they are solely representing a large group, such as a civic league or homeowners association, in which case they will have 10 minutes. Speakers who are participating virtually today, please mute any additional devices you have in the room to avoid any unnecessary background noise and/or the possibility of echoing and reverberation. Please note that once your name is called, you should wait three seconds before speaking to ensure the Planning Commission hears your complete remarks. Please begin your comments by identifying yourself. Also, do not ask, can you hear me, as only one feed is open at a time to minimize the echo reverberation, and as such, you will be unable to hear a response. Please note that the actions taken by the Commission today are in the form of a recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. The final decision to approve or disapprove an application will be made by the City Council. The Commission thanks you for your attendance, and we hope that your experience here today leaves you feeling that you have been heard and treated fairly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. The first order of business is the consideration of requests to withdraw or defer an item. Bill?
There is one item requesting a withdrawal. Agenda Item 9, the application of Tony J. Sadi and Lena A. Azar Sadi for a subdivision variance request to Sections 4.1 M and 4.4 B of the subdivision regulations, located at 5052 Lord Felton Lane in the Bayside District. The applicant's representative, Eddie Bourdon, has signed up to speak and will be requesting a withdrawal of the application.
Madam Chair, for the record, Eddie Bourdon. I had occasion to have lunch with the applicants at their restaurant Azar's last week, and they asked me about this. We were there to talk about something else, and I explained to them that what they were seeking was not something that the city can legally approve or grant, because you can't get a variance, subdivision variance, to having less square footage than the zoning of the property requires. So, they can try to get a conditional rezoning, and that may come forward in the future, but this application should be withdrawn, as it really isn't something that could be approved to begin with.
Great. Thank you. Do I have a motion to withdraw item number nine?
Madam Chair, I move approval to withdraw item number nine.
You need a second, please? Have a second from Mr. Horsley. Do I have any Planning Commissioners that need to abstain from this item? All right? None, so we'll go ahead and call for the vote.
If you are in favor of the motion, say yes, and if you are opposed, say no. Mr. Alcaraz?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Costin?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Horsley?
Yes.
Mr. Inman?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Weiner?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
By recorded vote of 10, 4, and 0 against, item nine has been withdrawn. The next order of business is the deferred agenda. We have three applications requesting to be deferred, Agenda Items 2, 5, and 6. Bill?
The first application is Agenda Item 2, the application of Centerville Bingo Incorporated for a modification of conditions for a bingo hall located at 1920 Centerville Turnpike in the Centerville District. The applicant's representative, John Richardson, has signed up to speak virtually, and I understand will be requesting a deferral to the August 12th public hearing. Mr. Richardson, please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, my name is John Richardson.
I understand you're asking for a deferral to the August 12th public hearing date, is that correct? Mr. Richardson, we understand you're requesting a deferral to the August 12th public hearing date, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. The second application is Agenda Item 5, the application of Bonnie G. Bright Sand Company for a modification of conditions for a borrow pit for the property located at 200 Princess Anne Road, Princess Anne District. Apparently, there was some confusion about the posting of the required sign. The applicant's representative, R. Harold Jones, has signed up to speak, and I understand that the request will also be to defer the August 12th public hearing. Mr. Jones, please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of the Commission. My name's R. Harold Jones. I'm with Sigma Environmental, and I represent Bonnie Bright today. And as mentioned in the, in sort of the preamble to this project, there's been, was some confusion between our, our staff and, and city staff in terms of public noticing and public sign, the sign notifications, and we, we're of the opinion that we don't not, that we do not meet the current 30-day standards at this point, therefore, we're asking for a deferral to next month's agenda, to which we will be sort of legally compliant with public notice procedures.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. With regard to Agenda Item 6, an application of Equikids Equavets therapeutic writing program for conditional rezoning from Conditional P1 Preservation District to Conditional AG2 Agricultural District for the property located at 2626 Heritage Park Drive, Princess Anne District, the Planning Commission voted to indefinitely defer this application at the June 24th Planning Commission hearing. The deadline for the advertisement for the July 8th public hearing was prior to the June 24th public hearing. So, due to this timing issue, this application appears on today's agenda, as we were hopeful that there would be enough time to finalize the request. Unfortunately, that hasn't been the case. No action or vote is necessary for this item, as it was indefinitely deferred at the June 24th Planning Commission hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Do I have a motion to defer Items Number 2 and 5 to August 12th?
Madam Chair, I move a deferral of Items 2 for 30 days, 5 for 30 days, and 6 indefinite deferral.
Oh, I didn't say 6, did I?
Just to clarify, there is no action required on Number 6, because it was already voted on for indefinite deferral. This is told to you by the City Attorney.
I need to make, I need to disclose something.
Let me get a second. Hold on. May I have a second, please?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Do I have any Commissioners that need to abstain from that?
Um, I'm gonna disclose, I'm not gonna say I'm gonna vote, but I've been involved with applicant Number 6's fundraisers. I am under the threshold for the financial compensation, but I will be voting.
All right. Thank you. Let me get a call for the vote, please.
If you are in favor of the motion, say yes, and if you are opposed, say no. Mr. Alcaraz?
Yes.
Mr. Costin?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Horsley?
Yes.
Mr. Inman?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Weiner?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
By recorded vote of 10, 4, and 0 against, Items 2 and 5 have been deferred. The next order of business is the consent agenda, and Vice Chair David Weiner will handle this portion of the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. The next order of business is the consent agenda. These are the applications that are recommended for approval by the staff, and the Planning Commission concurred, and there are no speakers signed up in opposition. The Planning Commission places the following applications on the consent agenda, 1, 3, and 4. The Planning Commission also places the following applications for a conditional use permit for short-term rental on the consent agenda, and they meet the applicable requirements for Section 241.2 of the zoning ordinance. Staff and Planning Commission supports the applications, and there are no speakers signed up to comment on Items 11, wait, 11, 13, 15, 16, 17, and 18. Before I make a motion, I want to pause to ask staff if there are any other speakers on these items.
There are no known speakers in opposition.
Great, okay. I move for the following items to be approved on the consent agenda, 1, 3, 4, 11, 13, 15, 16, 17, and 18.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Are there any other Planning Commissioners? Are there any other, are there any Planning Commissioners that need to abstain from any of these items? Yes, Mr. Whitney?
I do need, I'm not gonna abstain, but I do need to disclose that Items 1, 15, 16, 17, and 18 have Town Bank listed as the lender, and I am on a, a board at Town Bank, but I do not have any financial interest in these, and I will be voting.
Anyone else? Mr. Inman?
Yes, I need to disclose that I'm on the Advisory Board for Town Bank, Virginia Beach. I do not have any interest in any of the applications. We do not make any decisions on loans, and I will be voting.
All right. We'll go ahead and call for the vote, please.
Okay. If you are in favor of the motion, say yes, and if you are opposed, please say no. Mr. Alcaraz?
Yes.
Mr. Costin?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Horsley?
Yes.
Mr. Inman?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Weiner?
Yes.
And Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
By recorded vote of 10, 4, and 0 against, the following items, 1, 3, 4, 11, 13, 15, 16, 17, and 18 have been approved by consent. If you've had an application that was on the consent agenda, your requests will now be scheduled for an upcoming City Council meeting. Staff will contact you about the date. So that, so that others may attend in the chamber, please exit via the side door. If you are watching virtually, you are free to exit or stay and watch. Thank you all for your participation. The next order of business is the regular agenda. Bill Lanfair will introduce the first application.
Planning Commissioners, there are six items. Sorry. Wait for a minute. Planning Commissioners, there are six items on the regular agenda today. These are Items 7, 8, 10, 12, 14, and 19. Madam Chair, the first item on today's regular agenda is our Items 7 and 8, Atreese Lee Richard Jr. for a subdivision variance and a rezoning request from the AG2 Agricultural to the I-1 Light Industrial at 2968 Holland Road in the Princess Anne District. The applicant's representative is Eddie Bourdon. Mr. Bourdon, you have up to 10 minutes to present the request. Please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lanfair. Madam Chair, members of the Commission, for the record, Eddie Bourdon, Virginia Beach Attorney. I'm here representing Mr. A.L. Richard Jr., as well as his son, Atreese Richard III. They are both here, they come down from Maryland for the hearing. The Richard family's owned this parcel on Holland Road for over 60 years. The, the matter was initially gonna be on the consent agenda, and what I want to start with is to read the Condition Number 3 that has been modified. You all, I think, have a copy, there's been one subsequent change to the copy that you have, and I want to also apologize for the 11th-hour nature of this, but frankly, we weren't aware of the desire on the part of the city to restrict the access until middle of the week last week, and with my clients being in Maryland and the Fox Paintball people being here and the holiday weekend, we were not able to get all of this done, and plus having City Council yesterday, et cetera. So, sorry for the 11th-hour nature of this. The Condition Number 3, which is, the changes have been based upon the fact that we do not have any plan to develop Lot A at this time, so creating an ingress egress easement across Lot A couldn't be done, because we wouldn't know where it would be. So, Number 3 should be worded, and it's pretty close to what you have in front of you, during site plan review, and access to Holland Road as described above, that's in Condition Number 2, and a one-foot no ingress egress easement shall be required along the entire length of Holland Road frontage, other than a 60-foot width on Lot A across from the existing median break for a future access point. The word "and," followed by what's in the printed version, the width of the existing, added word "existing," driveway for vehicular access for Lot B. The next phrase at the end of that sentence is eliminated and as permitted in Condition 4 below. That's being eliminated, because Condition 4 below does not reserve or create any access to the subject property. And then it goes on, the remainder is as it was, as worded in front of you. A note shall be placed on the subdivision plat requiring, as a condition of any site development plan for Lot A, that a cross-access easement must be established between the two parcels, Lots A and B, to provide shared access for these lots to Holland Road. The cross-access shall eliminate one of the two points of potential access as described herein above. So, that's the, that is the wording of Condition 3, which your staff and the applicant are in agreement with, that will, will ensure that at the time a development plan does come forward for Lot A, that the, the access will go away that exists today for Fox Paintball. That's exactly what will happen. I mean, theoretically, it could go, the Fox Paintball access could be the whole access and the potential access across the median could go away, but I think any of us, us who have been around real estate in this property and this, or this roadway, that's not, it'll be where the median break is. Now, the subject property, to be very clear, because I, I think erroneously it was a representation this morning that, that there was residential property either adjacent or across the street. There is no residential property either adjacent or across the street, nor can there be, based on Navy restrictive easements and our comprehensive plan and existing zoning. It's all light industrial, all will be light industrial. The, the issue of, you know, not having any say-so over what goes on this piece of property, the likelihood given, now let me back up, the Navy, the Navy created this issue to one degree or another. They acquired an ACU's easement over all of the property except Lot A and the, and the drive stem, the drive aisle stem, back many years ago by condemnation. They did not condemn the development rights, which are basically residential, that they paid for, over the front part of the property. So, that's why the, the property has basically two different potential land uses, some that overlap each other. So, Lot A, at this point, is being rezoned, staff is, is correct. I think they're 100% correct that it, you should get rid of any opportunity to do residential, that would be what you don't want to see, that's what the comp plan says, that, that's what, you know, the Navy would want to see, but I would note the Navy didn't acquire the right to preclude that, but the property's not gonna be developed residentially anyway. But the most likely scenario, and I think it's probably 70, 80% likely, is that when there is actually a development plan for Lot A, it will most likely involve some commercial utilization, because that is permitted under, not every part, but a lot, a lot of commercial uses are permitted, and, or, and/or a conditional use permit. So, I would suggest it 70 to 80% likelihood that there will be a, a follow-on rezoning or proffered rezoning to a B1 or B1A. There may also be some light industrial flex space, who knows? But there is truly no plan at all to develop that property at this point in time, and don't, don't know when that might happen. So, with these conditions, what we're achieving is the preservation of this large piece that Fox Paintball has successfully operated for over 13 years on that property. It's perfect use for the property, you know, it's, it's low-impact, it doesn't involve any impervious surface. There are some wetlands and floodplain on Lot B, but Lot B does have the potential somewhere in the future, but with a rezoning, that would have to occur to be some light industrial use, but hopefully the, the paintball use will remain successful, and the, it is under contract with the Richards. It's not a, not a hope for, they've been pursuing this for a number of years, couple of years, worked out the contract between Fox and the Richards, and the property, Lot B, will be conveyed to, to the Fox, and, and that deed will include a reservation to the Richards, that they have the, the absolute right to relocate the access to come across Lot A if and when Lot A were to develop, and these conditions protect that completely. I was gonna talk about trying to share the other entrance that the city has an easement for to get to their BMP, but the reality is, it's the city that has it, which I didn't realize, instead of VDOT, and they're not gonna approve it, so that's not even an issue worth having a conversation about. So, we think that with these conditions, it should remain something that the Planning Commission recommends to council, just as your staff is recommending to council, and there's no opposition that we, and I think there's support for it in the community. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bourdon. Do we have any questions? Anybody have any questions for Mr. Bourdon? Yes, Jack?
Yeah, I, I thought this had been brought up, but so the, the reason for this is because they're, the intent is to sell Lot B, is that the?
The, the Fox Paintball folks who've operated there for 13 years are, are going to buy Lot B. We have to create that lot for them to acquire it, which we should want, because we should want that to continue to be a successful recreational business that is, from an environmental standpoint, it's as good as it's gonna get, and from a flooding standpoint, there's no impervious surface. So, I mean, it, it's just, it's a, it's a great use for that piece of property, and, and this is a way to hopefully ensure that it continues to be used in that manner for the foreseeable future, and that's what this is all about. That's all it was ever about to start with.
Anybody else have any other questions for Mr. Bourdon?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I did, I did notice, did, did I hear you, you were the mayor a little earlier in the, in the proceedings?
What?
I think someone referred to you as Madam Mayor. I think Harold Jones did.
No, thank you.
Madam Chair, there are no speakers signed up to speak.
We'd like to ask if there are any speakers present in the lobby, Building 19, or in the chamber that would like to speak. Anyone?
Okay.
There are no more known speakers.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna close this hearing and open it up to the Planning Commissioners. Yes?
Mr. Towne, are y'all comfortable with the way Condition Number 3 is written there?
Yes, sir. Mr. Horsley, we reviewed it with the applicant's representative, and we are in agreement with the, with the changes to the condition.
Mike?
I would support this application. I think that we had some discussion at, at the informal session, because it's a rather unusual request, and, but having heard from Mr. Bourdon and further discussion at our informal, it, it, it makes sense, and it's, we, it's understandable what the goal of the applicant is to create this, these two lots. And it's, while we would like to have some restriction or some ability to approve what goes on Lot A, we, there's hardly any way to do that at this point, and the applicant clearly has no idea what might become of Lot A, who might purchase it, or who might develop it. So, just looking at it in the context of the area of the city that it's in and other, other properties in, in the vicinity, it, I, I think this works, in my opinion.
Great, yes. Mr. Redmond?
I'll go one further and move approval of the application.
All right. We have? Do you wanna? I think.
I'm, I'm not in opposition. My, my, I guess my, my comments earlier were just that, you know, that I'm not real in favor of the idea of losing control of, of, of what the building will look like there, but it totally makes sense. I mean, I think that the, the paintball operation is a great use of the, for the property, and as Mr. Bourdon said, it's not creating any more impervious surface, so I just wanted to say my comment.
Great, thank you. All right, so we have, oh, I'm sorry, Jack.
Oh, yeah, no, I just kinda echo, you know, this is not of such an occurring, recurring nature that-
You know, this is not of such an occurring, recurring nature that this is going to be something we see throughout, you know, the special economic growth area, ocean of south. So it's, you know, I think it, it's just preserving that front parcel for industrial use while maintaining existing use in the, the back, which is the, the paintball use. So, I mean, I'm, I'd be there.
Okay, great, thanks, Bob.
Is it possible to do a rezoning or a, separate the parcels without rezoning? Or is that the argument? That it's not?
The parcels cannot be, you cannot create the two parcels without the subdivision variance, which is, which is the first part of it.
Okay.
Great, thank you. So I have a, a motion on the floor and a second. I got a second from Don. Okay. All right, so can we call for the vote, please?
Sure. If you are in favor, other motions say yes, and if you're opposed, say no. Mr. Akaraz?
Yes.
Mr. Costin?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Horsley?
Yes.
Mr. Enman?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Redman?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Weiner?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Okay, by recorded vote of zero four and zero, I mean, 10, four and zero against, agenda items seven and eight is hereby recommended for approval by the planning commission.
The next application is item 10, Terry Champion for a conditional use permit for short-term rental at 323 Norfolk Avenue in the Beach District. The applicant is Terry Champion. Ms. Champion, you have up to 10 minutes to describe the request.
Okay.
Please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon, planning commissioners. My name is Terry Champion, and I'm applying for a conditional use permit for short-term rental. My husband and I purchased 323 Norfolk Avenue when we, January 7th in 2020. On January 15th, we went down to the city to register it under our LLC, Atsea Cabin, make sure we were signed up to pay all of the occupancy taxes, the lodging taxes, and anything else that the city required. We wanted to make sure that we were in compliance with everything prior to renting out. I personally, my husband and I managed the property. We purchased it as our second home, actually, it's the only home that we own. We wanted to be able to have friends, family come and visit, as well as have the opportunity to rent it out. I, I can't give you a magic number. It may only be rented out five times a year. I just don't know. I am a full-time real estate agent, and I wanted, one of the reasons I purchased it was I wanted to be able to offer clients to come into town for house hunting, a place to go. You know, it would be an option for them. So renting it out on Airbnb and Verbo is not really something that was a priority for us, but if somebody were to stay there for a week that wanted to come into town, I would like to be able to have some income on that. So just to be clear, this is not our sole income, this is not continued revenue for us that we depend on. It's a little bit of a different situation. So also, I want to thank zoning first, because this is stressful. I know we have a lot of opposition. It's not fallen on my feet, but it's fallen on the feet of the prior owner of this property that rented it out for 18 months. And there are others that have been rented out, all not ideally managed, I understand. So those here and up, and I'm going completely off script, so I'll probably mishap this stuff, but
That's all right.
Those in opposition, I understand. I feel the same things they feel. I don't want our community to go down. Forty percent of the residents aren't even full-time. They're here visiting, enjoying their vacation home on weekends, long weekends and holidays. I personally have not met hardly any of them. I've, I'm in that unit every day. My daughter lives there full-time. She has since Smarts when she graduated with her masters, and I'm there every day. So I see what goes on, as opposed to some of the people who aren't there every day. Thirty-one percent of the residents rent out, of the owners rent out long-term. I'm not going to go into the detail about long-term renters and some of the problems you can have with those, but we have them, like any other community, we have them. And 28% of the owners are full-time, so they live there year-round. Out of my little section, my building, there's six units inside our vestibule. I've met one of the owners who lives across the hall from me. So that's it, and I'm there every day. I will say there's only three active duty, or active duty, there's only three active short-term rentals now, and there used to be five to seven. So it's gone down. If I'm approved, I would be the fourth to be approved with that condition. But I guess my, my point here in, in saying that people who rent short-term rentals, I really feel like have a bad name. They don't all come to party, get drunk, and disturb the peace. They come to, as a family, to enjoy the beach, to sit down and have a home-cooked meal at a table, have separate bedrooms, and enjoy the beach. I mean, our condos are located at Norfolk Avenue. They're not in the quiet Hampton somewhere. You have no idea what goes on on Norfolk Avenue. There are unicycles, there are mopeds, there are dog walkers, joggers, people schlepping their beach gear up and down, and then late at night, there are drunk people trying to find their car. It's not quiet, but it's the beach. And so when you buy a place there, you kind of know what you're buying. I also let any renter know, hey, this may not be the place for you. I cannot promise you quiet enjoyment. I can't guarantee that because of the location, but I can guarantee you that we're hands-on. My husband is a retired Marine Colonel, retired from American Airlines pilot. He has nothing to do but have time, time to help me manage this place. And I am five minutes down the road. We've spent a lot of money renovating this place and continue to renovate it. There's nobody more than me who wants to see this place taken care of. We have put things in place. We personally greet each guest in the unit, and they thank me for that. We've only rented it out three times, and so they thank me for that. We give them a walkthrough of the property. We go over the rules and regulations, to include the condo rules. We require them to sign that they know the rules and the bylaws of the condos, as well as our rules. I annoyingly check in with them all the time. I don't know if they like it or not, but I want to put my face out there and my voice out there all the time. If they need anything, if they want anything, make sure everything's going well. The previous owner did install a video camera in the doorway to be able to see who was coming and going. I left it there. I thought it was useful. So I was using it to monitor as well, but that, I was asked to take the camera down, and I complied immediately. So I no longer have a camera there. I, I can't really see who comes and goes, although it hasn't been rented out since the end of February. Moving forward, you know, that's something that's probably, something that our condo association will need to address. But anyway, we've, gosh, I probably, I'm off track here, but our unit only holds five guests. I know that the city ordinance allows you six, because we're in a two-bedroom. I wouldn't let six people in my unit. So that's just kind of our, our rule that we have. We have a strict $500 security deposit, a lease that personally even I wouldn't sign. It is strict. And it's meant to keep the people away that are coming to party. The only incident that we had out of the three, and I'm so regretful of this, was we had four ladies from Northern Virginia that were coming to have a peaceful, relaxing time with each other, and I decided we wouldn't greet them, that I didn't need to be on top of them, and so I never met them face-to-face. And they were, there was no noise complaints, they were fine, except for there was an incident, and I was immediately notified. I was devastated. I called the president, I called the secretary. I mean, I called and apologized, as addition to the neighbor across the hall profusely. And it made my husband and I rethink how we are going to screen future guests, which means probably Airbnb, Verbo are not going to be an option for us anymore. Even though we're talking to people and we're involved, you know, I just don't know how carefully those are screened, in addition to us. Also, the other two that we had there, a mom and dad visiting, saying goodbye to their son, he was leaving on cruise for six months, and they wanted just to be there. They played games, they had all the games out. I mean, they were harmless, they were wonderful. And after that, there were two nurse practitioners from Northern Virginia here for a conference in Norfolk. Their biggest complaint was they liked to read, and there wasn't enough light in the living room. So, I mean, I, I'm doing the best I can. I am not, I did not come into this community disrupted. I did not come to, I have all the same concerns they do. I just feel like my husband and I should be given a chance to prove that, and also to shed some positive light on short-term rentals, rather than them being a detriment, you know, to our community. So that's.
Thank you. Yeah. Appreciate that. Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
A little later.
Yeah, a few little later.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Did he have a question?
He's, he'll.
So, I'm even embarrassed to say, I, I, allegedly, they denied, but I'm going to, I'm going to go with the owner that said it happened. Allegedly, they were out in our deeded parking spot, and they were sitting there waiting for the key to the vestibule to go upstairs, and two had, well, they all probably had been drinking, I don't know, but two were caught urinating behind the bushes, and, and they couldn't get up to the unit to get to the bathroom, so I'm sure on a whim, they decided to do that. Certainly did not, do not in any way condone that. I was devastated, but you know, you can't control adult women, I assume they know better, but evidently, these women did not. So that was the incident, and that, that is why, you know, we're not, we're, we need to look at a different place on how we rent out our property. Yeah.
Thank you. You're welcome. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, there are seven speakers registered to comment. Each speaker has up to three minutes to make comments. The first speaker is Patricia Grossi, followed by Rob Rickert. Ms. Grossi, please state your name for the record. Thank you.
In person, in person.
She's online.
Online.
Yep.
Is there a name?
But if you would call her again, and to help the media folks say that she's on the phone.
Ms. Grossi, we're ready for you.
Okay. My name is Patricia Grossi, and I've lived at Lake Station for over 23 years, and served on the board of directors for approximately 15 of those years. And I can honestly say that I have never had a part problem with parking here. Now, I've also rented out both short-term and long-term, and have never had an issue with short-term rentals. However, airplanes, however, I've had an extremely difficult time with long-term rentals, with destruction of property and illegal activities, and therefore feel that there was more control over short-term rentals, as they can be removed immediately. There's, and also, there's nothing in our condominium documents that prohibits short-term rentals. So therefore, this is why my support is for Terry Champion to be approved for her permit that is before you today. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions for our speaker? No? Okay.
Madam Chair, the next speaker on this item is Rob Rickert, followed by Lee Sherlock. Mr. Rickert, please state your name for the record. Thank you. Mr. Sherlock, please state your name for the record. Thank you.
This is Lee Sherlock. Can you guys hear me? Can you guys hear me? Perfect, good, just wanted to make sure. Yeah, hey, so I moved here into Endo Lake Station condominiums, or I live here. I just want to let it be known that, hey, I am a, a full-time resident here. I, I have a full-time job, and, you know, probably since March, I've actually been working from home, and so I am here literally all the time. And when I initially bought this place, I was aware that it was previously an active short-term rental, and knew that there were several others within the property that were being rented out as short-term rentals. And, you know, actually liked the idea that potentially one day down the road, I might have that flexibility to do so as well. Let me tell you about some of the things that I have experienced since I have been here, but hear me out, because it may seem a little counterintuitive, maybe, to my, my position on this thing. But, you know, and, and some of its repeated, kind of repetition of what Terry had, had talked about, but, hey, intoxicated people throughout the day, throughout the night, walking up and down the streets, passing through our parking lots. We have police and fire trucks and ambulance sirens, sirens are a very regular occurrence. We have protests, with protesters being chased down the street by police, both by foot and on car, right? We've got loud engines of cars speeding down the street. I don't know if they're drag racing or what's going on. We currently have a busted-down fence to our property, from what I'm guessing, is a car running into it or something of that nature. And recently, some idiot recently just threw some ice cream or something all over the front of my car, which I'm really appreciative of. But I, I guess, and all these examples really aren't all encompassing of everything that, that goes down, that goes on down here. But my real point, I guess, that I'm, I'm trying to make is, is let's take into consideration where we're located, right? And we're two blocks from the touristy part of the boardwalk. Hey, our neighbors are the White Marlin Inn and the Beaumont Inn, if you guys are familiar. We live across the street from the parking lot of what I believe is a camping ground, and their access to the beach, as well as the shack, side street cantina, Waterman's, Mahi Mah's, Chick's, just to name a few of the more popular spots. And I guess the point I'm trying to make is, this is not a small, quiet beach town community, or even the North End for that matter. So everyone that purchased here either knew, or should have done their own research, know that, hey, these were the types of things that you're going to be experiencing when you live here. So all of these things, I'm not even sure why, why this has to go through the city. I mean, I think of, you know.
Do we have any questions for our speaker? Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, the next speaker on the, on this item is Malcolm Benham, followed by Hubert Jones. Mr. Benham, please state your name for the record. Thank you.
First of all, my name is actually Benham Malcolm, it's reversed. Good afternoon, my name is Benham Malcolm. My family has owned 319 Norfolk Avenue since 1998, which is directly below the CUP applicant that's here today. My family and I have been heavily impacted for the last two years by the hotel room that's been operating above us. My ask of the commission is that you deny the CUP for a number of reasons. Number one, this is precedent-setting for our community. Right now, we have about 47% of the homes that are, that are in our community have written in in opposition. Of the 10 that have written in saying that they support the opposition, five of those are, are units that have actually, have been doing short-term rentals, and it's in their interest, business interest, to actually continue doing them. That excludes the one that's been listed today, which is in unit 323. If you exclude those ones who are already doing short-term rentals, that brings the number of opposition that's been formally applied for the city down to four, or only 12% of our community. Second reason is that the parking mitigation's been proposed, which one my neighbors will address more thoroughly, doesn't, really is not as big as the issue as it may seem, but it actually, allowing but it actually, allowing that leasing of the space in the garage amplifies the likelihood of overcrowding within the unit. So there's an indirect impact of that. There are five violations against location if you include 1992, 2019. The ordinance occupancy of six exceeds HOA limit of four unrelated persons per room, or per unit, excuse me. Our building, our parking lot, our HOA rules, our management company contract, our shared utilities are not designed to be short-term rentals. So focusing for just a moment on the violations, which seems to be an area that the, the Commission is interested in, the staff reports shows violations that occurred since January 2020. As the owner of the property correctly pointed out, she bought the property in January of this year. Within six weeks of closing, she had her first complaint filed against the property. The new, so in theory, a new applicant shouldn't have any violations against them, because they have no background and no history. She bought the property, and immediately she applied. They're not going to have any violations in just six weeks' time typically. So, in this case, so we want to go back and take a look at the rest of 2020. We have the COVID-19 things that occurred. She has indeed been resident on her property many days, but she's been doing construction and renovating the property and improving it. There was a full, complete gutting of the property done two years ago when the previous investor bought the property. The 2019, 2019 violations are indeed relevant to what we, the experience we've had. The new, the new, the new investor was indeed the listing agent who bought the short-term business plan that was provided by the previous investor at a record, at a then-record-high purchase price for the property. That business plan likely showed strong booking revenue stream, which created the 2019 violations. My experiences in 2019 include constant noise, overcrowding, stuff raining down from above.
Malcolm, I'm sorry, I have to stop you. You have three minutes. Do we have any questions for Mr. Malcolm? Yes?
Just one. The incident that you just brought up, was it the one that she just disclosed to us?
I'm sorry?
The incident that you said that happened six weeks after her purchasing? Was that the one that she had brought up?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
In 2019, in 2020.
Twenty, thank you.
I have a question for you. Mr. Malcolm, right?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, the issues that you had were prior to the applicant. She purchased it, if I wrote it down right, January 7th, 2020.
And then transferred to her local, to her limited liability company shortly after that.
Right. In, in anticipation of using it as a short-term rental.
That's correct.
Correct. But, so, truly what we're here for is, is this particular applicant, and I appreciate the problems that you've had and understand them in 2019, but, you know, that's not really sort of what we're discussing today. And I understand the impact of short-term rentals and, and how they are, but during, for this application, the one incident that has occurred was the one that, that I read the letter about of the four ladies that had to wait so long to get upstairs, correct?
Yes, that's correct. That was a brief question, I think, was just asked by George.
Right, right. But have you had any other issues?
No, and there's been very limited rentals. Her daughter is indeed there right now.
Okay.
And she's been doing construction upstairs for, for, for a while.
Renovating it.
So, and also, there's COVID-19, though. Demand for staying in rentals in general in the entire community is down. Therefore, there's not an opportunity to generate the violations at the same rate as previous years.
Right. Any other questions for Mr. Malcolm? Yes, Jack?
So, Mr. Malcolm, how would you compare the, the noise from, you know, typical short-term rental, and it's understood that it would be, you know, before, probably, you know, this application, but to the noise that, you know, is typically experienced along, you know, in the area that you live, you know, near the oceanfront, you know, Norfolk Avenue and, you know, the vicinity?
Sure, there's lots of noise from Oceana. We all experience that. That's a given for the area. But in terms of noise generated by, by neighbors within the community, most of our neighbors are single, are single. There, there's no kids in the community. It's actually, it's relatively quiet. The short-term rental unit people who typically show up, they're on vacation, and they're there to have a good time. So many, many times, it's going to be later at night is when they're coming back. Typically is when we have problems, coming back from the bar area. The oceanfront is when the problems occur. Or there'll be parties that they have on the back of their decks, and there's been reports as many as 12 people on a deck that is a very small, three-foot-wide area. And they make a lot of noise. They have music going. They'll be having a party out back. But in general, the Virginia Beach Police does a good job. They do a phenomenal job, actually, at, at slurring things down after 10:00 PM or 11:00 PM on weekends. And it's generally pretty quiet within the community, the overall south or east end of Norfolk Avenue. But they're there to have fun, and my neighbors have to get, my neighbors and I, even on, on telecommuting from there, have to get up and work in the morning. They do not.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, the next speaker on this item is Hubert Jones, followed by Thomas Belvin. Mr. Jones, please state your name for the record. Thank you.
I make a slight correction of my name. It's Lee Jones, Hubert.
Okay.
But everybody gets that, that way. Commissioners, I just wanted to say that on November, in November 2013, we purchased the conduit at 325 Norfolk Avenue, Lake Station condominiums. This was to be our place to relax, to get away, to enjoy the new community. And we're aware of the investor of Unit 323 is proposing a change to the zoning code so that they can legally rent on a commercial, short-term basis, you know? So here's our concerns. Water and sewage. Our HOA fee covers the water and sewage, which is very nice for us, except for the fact that the number of individuals and visitors that you're going to have in short-term rentals here, it's going to increase the amount of the utilities. And that's one reason why the HOA fee will go up. It's, it's not fair for those of us who keep within the number of living in one unit to pay for the additional use of water and sewage in another unit. And privacy. We, we know many of the individuals who use or stay in their condos, and when we don't, we start seeing people we don't know. We don't know if they're supposed to be in there. Are they on the property legitimately or not? We feel a sense of insecurity about our own property and safety. And speaking of safety, as well as the noise, even though there might be four to six occupants in one unit, as in the past, short-term renters seem to have their friends and their buddies come on over. In other words, this is one of the larger places when several of them have different hotel rooms along the way. And they go, "Come on over. We got a deck. We got all this and everything." I've seen as many as 12 people standing on a deck that's built for four people. And, and then there's large amounts of trash at the end of the day, including dog poop, bottles, and it's just collecting in the parking lot and into the common areas. And then there's the parking issue. At Lake Station, each conduit is assigned a numbered space and two guest passes for unnumbered spaces, which are limited. If the city of Virginia Beach allows the investor in 323 to have a space in the garage on, on Ninth Street, in the Pacific, or any other place where the short-term renters could have up to four cars there, at least for them, for themselves and their guests. And these issues, you know, they're dear to us, and we purchased our condo with the idea that we would be in a safe residential community. I know there's some people have done short-term rentals on the sly. We just don't want this legalized and institutionalized. Thank you very much.
Right. Do we have any questions for the speaker? Yes, George.
Mr. Jones, at the beginning, you had stated that this applicant has requested a change of the zoning code. Can you tell me more about that? I must have missed that.
Well, that's what I thought the CUP was. To allow, to permit the use of that unit to be rented on a short-term basis.
Yeah, there's a code, and we're here to see if they meet that code.
Maybe zone is not the proper word for me to use.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay.
Great. Yes, Robin?
Are these issues, concerns that you have being brought to the HOA's attention?
Yes, yes.
And are they taking steps to address that?
Yes and no.
Can you elaborate on that?
You have a certain amount of meetings and whatnot. We also have, we, we have officers who might not be there, who live in other places. When I see a bunch of people drinking in the common areas, I think maybe it's not necessarily the right move to call the president of our board at that time. I can bring these things up at our annual meetings. I can bring them up to our individuals, but I'm bringing it up right now here.
No, no, and I agree with you. I serve on an HOA board. And so these are the types of things, we hold monthly meetings, that we would want residents to bring to our attention.
Sure.
So do they, are these being discussed at your monthly board meetings?
At the monthly board meetings? I'm not sure. I'm not always so sure about that. I mean, there's some, there's definitely some issues there, and we're going to be working on those. But we're here right now, and I'd like to present this to the city.
Sure.
And I'd like to have the city on our side.
All right, any more questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, the next speaker on this item is Thomas Belvin, followed by Tatiana Green. Mr. Belvin, please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good afternoon. I'm Thomas Belvin, owner of 313 Norfolk Avenue, part of the Lake Station condominiums. I'm here today to speak in opposition of the proposed conditional use permit to allow short-term rentals in Unit 323 in my building. And here are some points that support my opposition. Number one, in our bylaws and rules for the Lake Station Condominium Association, the use of each unit is expressly restricted to single-family use and occupancy only. Number two, two dedicated parking spaces are required for this two-bedroom unit, short-term rental by city code. Each condominium is assigned one dedicated parking space, and there are 18 unassigned parking spaces available for guests on a first-come basis. While the mitigation of a rented parking space in a nearby parking garage may be adequate solution for a short-term rental using a single-family detached home, in this, in the case of shared guest parking, it does not work. There's no way to hold any short-term renter accountable for not using the guest spaces, thus impacting all the other owners. Number three, I personally share the inside stairwell foyer and external single-keyed security door with Unit 323. Management of the security door key and the constantly changing short-term renters will greatly increase risk to me and my family. This is particularly troubling during this pandemic. Our community is not a hotel, and it's not designed or constructed to be one. So who do my, I and my family turn to, day or night, for issues of noise, trash, confrontation, security, or whatever? Do I always call 911? The burden, then, is on me and my family to confront, investigate, and initiate enforcement of any of the conditions placed on the CUP. This application has, has not been reviewed, discussed, or voted on by Lake Station HOA board or owners, or unit owners. There's been no community meeting, discussion, or endorsement of this variance, which will significantly change the entire environment of the community. Number five, the owner of 323 Norfolk Avenue has not attempted to reach out and communicate to me in any way to give notice or ask for support of the variance. So I'm asking you to support me and my neighbor's request to deny the short-term rental conditional use permit for 323 Norfolk Avenue in order to keep Lake Station a family, community, and environment, not a hotel environment. Thanks for your time and attention, and stay safe.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the speaker? Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, the next speaker on this item is Tatiana Green. Ms. Green, please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Tatiana Green. I've lived full-time at 321 Norfolk Avenue since January of 2001. My unit is directly opposite 323 on the third floor. My walls, common area, front doors, stairs and landings, and back deck are all shared with the strangers that show up at any time in Unit 323. And the incident that happened in the front entranceway at the end of February, even though the investor said it was only rented to four women, there were six women there, two of them urinating right in front of me, and four sitting in the car smoking, and it was at 11:30 PM in the evening. Why are they locked out at that time? I do not understand. But this is the kind of activity that frequent turnover short-term rentals often bring. These are the activities. So I'm concerned about the erosion of my security, privacy, the quiet enjoyment of my home, the feeling of community that has been disappearing as short-term rentals increase. I'm asking the Planning Commission to deny the conditional use permit application for several reasons. Enforcement. In Lake Station, most residential units are occupied by one person or a second-family vacation home. The physical design of our buildings, our parking lot, our homeowners association rules, our shared water utilities, and our contract with the management company are all designed for residential environment. We don't have a front desk. We don't have a parking lot. We don't have attendants. We don't have a security guard. And we don't have a maintenance team to address the needs of short-term environment. For security, I feel unsafe now coming into the common area of my building. I never know who's going to be on the stairs or the landings as I walk up to the third floor. Health-wise, I have no idea if strangers are going into Unit 323 and are bringing in COVID-19, bedbugs, roaches, and other common, and other health issues. It's always been my home. I've lived there for over 20 years, and I don't like the changes that I see happening, that investors are making a huge profit at the expense of my safety, my peace of mind. I, my lifestyle, I have to go to work in the morning. There's no, really, it's, it's a wooden unit. You can hear everyone just normally walking up the stairs. It's not very well insulated. To have a unit opposite me with six people tromping upstairs after they're coming home from the oceanfront partying is very different from one person that lives there coming in at a regular time. I have to go to work the next day.
Thank you. I'm sorry to cut you off.
Okay. Thank you for your time. That's okay.
We have any questions for, for our speaker? No? Thank you very much. Okay.
Madam Chair, that was the last speaker for this item. We'd like to ask if there are any speakers present in the lobby, Building 19, or in the chamber that would like to speak. Anyone? There are no more known speakers.
All right. Would you like to come up and, yeah, oh, sorry. I was going to ask her if she wanted to come up.
Now I wish I had my full 10 minutes back. So I want to say, first of all, to Ms. Green who just spoke. First of all, it wasn't 11:30 at night. It was dusk. There were never six women in that unit. I had the cameras. I was able to watch them come and go. I'm allowed six people, but there were not six in there. For somebody who despises short-term rentals, she was friends with the, with the previous owner. And she knew, for a year and a half, she watched people come and go. I introduced myself when we first moved in. She knew exactly who I was. She knew exactly our intent to possibly turn this into a short-term rental. And she never once said to me, "There were issues. There were problems. There were concerns," ever. In fact, let me just tell you, I came home one day after our first renter, and she had a stack of books, brochures. She had... and she had a stack of books, brochures, she had gone to the visitor's center. She had made an effort with a handwritten note to share that with my renters. I thanked her, but, I mean, she didn't have to do that. And why did she do it if she's so opposed to renters? As far as the parking goes, we do have one deeded spot, and we have one guest pass, one visitor's spot, shared with the other, I believe it's 17, I counted, 17 unmarked spots. They are first come, first served. My daughter parks in our deeded spot every day, and every day I use the visitor's spot. Never have a problem. I've never not had parking. In fact, I did send some pictures, I don't know if they made it to the slide, July 4th, and it could be the time, it could just be everything that was going on. There were eight available spots in the morning of July 4th, and again, when I left at nine o'clock that night, there were just that many left. And I took pictures to prove it, and they're timestamped. So our parking's not an issue. It hasn't been for me at all. Water, talking about shared utilities, I guess it could go both ways. The full-time residents take showers every day, use utilities every day, as opposed to short-term renters, that there's a small window of time, really, that they're even there, summertime. Come fall, winter, early spring, they're pretty much empty. So we're subsidizing the full-time residents for their use of the utility. So it, it all works out in the end, in my opinion. I just don't think it's a good argument to go against short-term renters. I am doing some remodeling in there. It's not a complete renovation. It is a renovation. The place was not completely gutted, I will promise you that, or I wouldn't be putting the effort into it. There, there was hardwood floors installed, which has been an issue for Mr. Benham, and I have been sensitive to that. I haven't seen him, ever met him. I've been there since January. But I know the hardwood floors were an issue with him, with the last owner. So I wear rubber shoes. I make the effort. My daughter knows to walk lightly. But she came home the other night from work, on a Friday night, and was accosted by his sister visiting, first time I've ever seen anyone in the unit, and said she walked heavy. My daughter is 120 pounds soaking wet, but she walked heavy. She was a heavy walker.
I hate to cut you off.
Okay.
Okay, but do we have any questions? Yes, George?
Yeah, I do. So I wanted to ask you before.
Yes.
I need to hear from the opposition. When, when the incident happened?
Yes.
How were you contacted? And you said it happened at dusk or sunset?
The, the, the president called me. I had no idea it happened. I have left all my information with Ms. Green across the hall. She's my only contact. I said, "If there's anything that goes on, please call me. I'm proactive."
So what did you do when you were called?
Oh, I immediately called them. I texted them. I said, "This is not acceptable. You all need to leave." Like, "I cannot have this happening in our unit." And they denied it.
And then I, I received an email that y'all took drastic action, and what did you do?
I didn't take drastic action. I told them they were to leave in the morning.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's the best I could do. I told them they need to leave in the morning. It was, it was, I mean, this went on into the evening of me calling. I called Ms. Green. I profusely apologized. I told her I had been watching them on the camera because I was concerned. You know, just because when they, when they checked in, there was five of them instead of four that were registered. So I was concerned, so I was watching and monitoring them, not just so much for me, but for my neighbors, to make sure they weren't being loud. They weren't, and they, and they weren't. That was just that incident, that, that she found them, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Not that this has anything to do with the application, but...
What, who made you take the camera down? To me, that's big security for, for you.
I haven't had it, so it was, it was up when I bought the unit. It seemed like a good idea, but that particular weekend, when Ms. Green said, "I feel like my privacy, my privacy is being invaded." The president called me and said, "Terry, I can't make you, but I'm requesting that, suggesting that you take it down." I said, "I don't have a bit of problems with that," and it's been taken down ever since.
Okay, I was just asking, this is one.
The pictures that you're seeing are the wedge, the placeholder for the camera. It's not been there as long as I was asked to take it down. Yeah, I don't have an issue with that.
Anybody have any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, I'm gonna, oh, yes, well, let me, I'm gonna close this. And we will open it up for discussion among the commissioners. And, Robin?
Actually, wait, you had your head up first.
This seems like, I mean, for, with short-term rentals, it seems like, you know, when it's in a neighborhood and it's in a single-family community, it's, it's a little, little more difficult. When it's in a condominium complex, if the condo association's doing its job and the residents of the condo association, the majority of them are against it, they, they have control of this. We're not here to correct them wrong. I mean, the condo association has the ability to, to set rules for each one of those condo owners. And, you know, it sounds like this condo association has just had a major failure. If, if truly the majority of these people are against it, they've, they've really done a bad job of, of putting measures in place to prevent it. I just, I mean, that's, that's my comment, so.
Robin, did you just?
Yes, so I completely agree that it is an issue that needs to be brought to the association's attention. My question for Mr. Inman, one of the gentlemen said that within the bylaws, it says that it's for single-family occupancy. Does that apply in this case?
At this point, I'm gonna need to tell you that I'm gonna need to abstain from any commentary with regard to this association. My law firm does represent this association, and I'm a registered agent for the corporation.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
And I was gonna cut Mr. Inman off and tell you that was my question.
Right, got it.
But I was, I'm good, thank you. Yeah, Robin, this is, short-term rentals are consi, considered a single-family use.
Okay.
So we don't interpret their bylaws in any way. We would not interpret anything that they ban or they don't ban. A court of law would have to do that. But the state considers that a, a short-term rental is a single-family use. It's not a commercial use.
Okay, thank you. David?
Thank you. Couple quick points. I do not think that it is necessarily the case that a multifamily building is inherently ill-suited to short-term rentals. I don't think short-term rentals are necessarily evil, and everybody there is going to the bathroom in front of the joint, or any of that. Nonetheless, this situation looks to me not to be appropriate for this kind of use. I think that lady's exactly right. Somebody's coming across from her doorway, clip, clop, clip, clop, doesn't know who it is every day. You know, you, you go out into the common area of the, of the condominium building where you live, and it's somebody who's come back from someplace at the oceanfront at midnight or something like that. And it just, it's just too dense an environment to make these pieces fit together. So, I mean, I think this is a legitimate economic use, or we wouldn't have them. They wouldn't be allowed under the ordinance. But there are places where they make sense better, and places where they don't. And this, to me, seems one of those places where it just doesn't make sense to have anymore. And certainly, we're very, obviously, there has been a problem, and been a problem this year. If it's not going to be rented but just a brief period of the year, why was someone there in February? I mean, so clearly, it's going to be rented as much as they can get it rented. And this is something with which a lot of people are very uncomfortable. I, myself, uncomfortable for it. And caveat emptor. If you buy a place, better expect to own the place. You can't expect necessarily to have a short-term rental in it, unless you got a contingency in your contract and you work it out that way. But just because you buy a place and intend to use it one way doesn't mean it's the right place to do it, or you get to do it. We have a process for that. And I think the sooner folks get that in their heads, I think the better off we'll all be. So I'm, I'm not going to support the application. In fact, I will oppose the application, and I thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Yes, Jack?
Can I ask a question of Ms. Champion?
Yeah, absolutely. Ms. Champion, can you come up to the podium, please?
Just the, the patio or the porch, like, is it, is it shared, or is it?
Well, we have, we have our, we have a common stairway that should be, that we use, so...
Common stairway, but not the exterior, like, on the?
No, we each have our little deck, and then you walk, and then you go down these stairs. But it's all being gutted, replatted, expanded. Our decks are being expanded. There's an entire construction project going on in our units. And all of the, they finished one building. They're, they're at ours now. So all the ephesus is coming off. The decks are all being completely restructured and enlarged. Everything is being torn up at this point. So our decks will be bigger. It doesn't take away from the fact that there's only six people past 11 o'clock that can sleep there, but...
To your question, Mr. Wall, it appears that there is a?
There's a divider.
Divider, yes.
Okay, and they're small, but they're being expanded.
They're, they're small. Well, I don't know that the front ones are, but if, you don't have any pictures of the back, and that's the area that you share with your neighbor.
Okay, so that's, the backs aren't shown on?
So actually, okay, right above the green SUV is my master bedroom. And then to direct right is the second bedroom. And then next to that would be the neighbor across the hall's bedroom. So we have a shared wall. Yeah.
You have, you have a shared balcony?
Well, see, you can kind of see, there's like a partition there.
Oh, okay.
I, I've never gone out on it. I don't really know. I mean, I don't go out that way. It goes, overlooks the parking lot, and there's not much to see, but, but that's how it... Yeah, I wish we had pictures of the back. It would give you a better idea.
You can see it better on the third floor.
There's the reclating project, yeah. People, you know, there's no security there. People come and go all the time. I watched two kids cut through the other day, well, it wasn't the other day, it was last, a few weeks ago, and they went to jump on the fence and they broke it, trying to jump to go to Lake Drive. I mean, there's no way to police who comes in and out of that place. It's difficult, but, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else want to say? Go ahead.
Yeah.
I'm waiting for Redmond to go back.
What was that?
I'm, I'm gonna wait for Redmond. I'll get this.
So I did receive a lot of emails. I did receive a lot of calls. And, in the past, being on this board, I'm kind of a advocate of the 241.2 zoning ordinance. And then, of course, we have this process. And having said that and having listened to the opposition, I'm gonna make a motion that we deny this.
I think we definitely, yeah, David?
I'll say something first.
Okay, sure.
I'm gonna support it, and the reason I'm gonna support it is because we spent two and a half years putting an ordinance together. And in that two and a half years putting an ordinance together, nothing was ever said about no condominiums. Now, we're getting ready to change that, and my golly, this is the best...
Mr. Weiner, I need a second.
Sure.
In order for you to have a conversation.
We need a second? Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. So I'm gonna support it, and that's why, because we spent two and a half years putting an ordinance together. That did not say anything about not having, they meet all the requirements. Yeah, they may be a little close, but they meet the requirements. Now, we're gonna change the ordinance. Well, we're gonna look at changing and revising the ordinance. And we need to make that revision. But I don't think it's fair that we deny it just because, in this particular reason. Anyway, I'm gonna support it.
I just, I have an issue with people short-term renting before they are supposed to short-term rent. You know, I mean, that, I mean, you're conducting business prior to having, having a... Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Do they have permission once they make application?
No.
So basically, the applicant basically broke, I mean, they, they didn't follow the rules.
Right, right.
Okay.
So they're conducting business.
So by passing something, in a way, we're almost rewarding bad behavior? Okay.
Yeah, go on.
I, I too remember, like, Mr. Weiner said, you know, we went, went through countless number of meetings putting this ordinance together. And, and we ended up putting the conditional use permit process into this so that we could find if there were problems, and not just doing it by right. So I think that this is one incidence where the short-term rental has, has, the conditional use permit process for the short-term rental has, has come to life and has made these problems evident because the, the people, the neighbors have the right to come and voice their opinion, where before, by right, we wouldn't have had that opportunity. So I think the ordinance here is, is really working. And so I'm gonna support the, the motion Mr. Alcaraz made.
Okay. Anybody else? We have a motion in a second. Go ahead and call for the vote, please.
Okay, this motion is to deny the application. If you are in favor of the motion, say yes, and if you're opposed, say no. Mr. Alcaraz?
Yes.
Mr. Costin?
No.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Horsley?
Yes.
Mr. Inman?
I abstain for the reason I stated earlier, that I represent the association that's involved in this application, or has, yeah.
Okay. Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Weiner?
No.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
By recorded vote of seven, four, and three against, Agenda Item 10 has hereby been recommended for denial by the Planning Commission. Oh, two against, I'm sorry. Seven, four, and two against.
Six, four, I'm sorry. Let me, let me correct for the record. I apologize. It's six, four, two against, one abstention.
Oh, that's right. Thank you. Thank you. It's seven, four. One abstention.
Seven, yeah, seven, one.
So it was seven, four, and two against, with one abstention and one absence. So as record, seven to two.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Madam Chair, the next item on today's regular agenda is Agenda Item 12, David Lucas for conditional use permit for a short-term rental at 505 Barberton Drive in the Beach District. The applicant's representative is Sierra Alderman, who will present virtually. Ms. Alderman, you have up to 10 minutes to present the request. Please state your name for the record. Thank you. Ms. Alderman, please state your name for the record. Thank you. Ms. Alderman, your volume seems very low. We can barely hear you.
I know.
All right.
Madam Chair, if we could, we're, we're trying to get through the technical difficulties. If we can move to the next item?
Absolutely.
And we'll try to have the, the applicant.
Back online?
14.
So Dodd, James Dodd?
Yes.
So, Mr. Dodd, just please log out and log back in so that we can try to get your audio back online. And we're going to move to the next item and call your, and we'll call you back up. I will also note for the record, Mr. Redmond has left the meeting.
So actually...
I'm sorry.
We were on Item 12.
Mr. Lucas.
Lucas.
Lucas, right.
Okay, was Ms. Alderman? I'm sorry.
Right.
That was the item I asked you for, so, I'm sorry.
Ms. Alderman, if you could log out and log back in, please?
Go ahead and move to Dodd then.
Save your seat.
All right. Madam Chair, the next, next item on today's agenda is Agenda... Madam Chair, the next item on today's agenda is Agenda Item 14, James E. Dodd for conditional use permit for short-term rental at 2305 Oak Street in the Lindhaven District. The applicant is James Dodd, who will present virtually. Mr. Dodd, you have up to 10 minutes to present the request. Please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Okay, there you go. James Dodd?
Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay, my name is James Dodd. I'd like to say thank you to the commission and for their time today. My family has been in Cape Story since 1959. My parents live two streets over, and I've spent summers there for almost 50 years. We have a passion and a love for this neighborhood. I understand the integrity of this neighborhood. My wife, kids, and I invest a significant amount of time in Cape Story and Virginia Beach every year. We participate in most of the Cape Story parades and other civic events. We submit our application because we would like other families to enjoy the many blessings that this area offers. I'm, I submit, I'm completed?
He's done. This is done. Okay.
Are you in speakers?
Virtual. All right, thank you, Mr. Dodd. We don't have any speakers, correct?
Madam Chair, there are no speakers. We'd like to ask if there's any speakers present in the lobby, Building 19, or in the chamber that would like to speak. Anyone? There are no more speakers.
Okay, great. I'm gonna open, I'm gonna close it and open it up for the discussions amongst the planning commissioners. And is there someone that would like to lead this off? Yes, George.
So I wasn't hearing informal. Is there a reason why we're hearing it?
That's a good question.
Thank you.
I can answer that question.
Please do, Mr. Redmond.
Yes, there's a reason that we are, and whoever's controlling the screen can please put up the slide that shows the number of short-term rentals in the vicinity of this applicant. Okay, you can. You can observe that there are three other short-term rentals within a very short distance, with half a block and across the street. You can also see that there's sort of a proliferation going on along Shore Drive and Ocean Shore Avenue. One of the concerns that all of us have expressed from time to time is of having an adverse impact on our neighborhoods by having too many short-term rentals in the neighborhoods. I think this is a good example of such a problem. And this is a, as this gentleman, who's the applicant, stated, this is a longstanding neighborhood enjoyed by many residents and many families and so forth. And introducing more transient use of property is probably not desirable. And so I thought that we should closely look at this particular application and discuss whether or not this is too much in this particular neighborhood.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
I don't think this wrong way, just wanna ask a question. What is the proper number?
Well, of course, there is no magic number. It's a question of making a judgment based on proximity of the various applications and prior approved or registered grandfathered property.
Yes, Robin.
So are we paying, in that regard, are we paying different attention to neighborhoods like this versus 21st Street and 17th Street where there's like a significant abundance within a small area? Is that because this is in a different part of the city that we would be paying different attention to this?
That's a great question.
That is a, it is a good question, and I think that.
Nobody has answered.
Well, no, I don't, I mean, I think that going forward with this, when these first entered into our area the way they have, those areas, well, 21st Street and 22nd Street are major corridors. So those were designed with that somewhat in mind, not this, but as in they're major, as 17th Street is.
Right.
But in those areas, and we're totally getting off topic of where we are, but in those residential neighborhoods that have been sort of, they're like pockets of the OR district, this has come in and there's been a high concentration of, just like we just saw of every other house, all of a sudden you had a block of, or two blocks of six houses, or whatever it is, and half of them now are short-term rentals. And it's, it has an adverse impact on the year-round residents. And so I think what Mr. Edman was saying was, if you look at this, there's two blocks. Now granted, there's, you know, however many houses, but there are already within about a two-block area potentially five short-term rentals.
And I think if we want to discuss that moving forward, like, if we're gonna have a density restriction, then I'm okay with that. I just don't want to penalize these owners or these applicants for otherwise following the rules and essentially just being late to the gate.
Yes, Mike.
Well, yeah, I mean, I may be repeating myself, but, you know, I think, I think we are all about protecting neighborhoods. And I wouldn't distinguish that much between this area and areas closer to the beach if it's an established neighborhood where there are, you know, typically families living and not, or at least people who are living there full-time and not renting their homes either on any kind of basis. I'd want to be protective of all of that. Now, you know, this brings, this is a great transition here. This, this brings us to the, are we the guardians of the welfare of folks who have an opportunity to come down here and say, I don't want this in my neighborhood? Well, there's nobody here. There's nobody here objecting to it. I guess they like short-term rentals up there. In fact, we've heard that there are two more applications pending for this particular street, across the street. Did we not hear that?
No, and that's down.
That's the next, that's the other one.
That's another one.
That's the other one.
It's not this one.
Not this one. I think it was. Which, I'll tell you what, Mr., which application was it that we knew that there were two other?
12, I think it's 12. It was 18.
That we decided to hear, that from.
Item 18.
It was 18?
No, no, 18. Oh, sorry. One moment.
It was 19, number 19 on 12th Street, it was the duplex.
12th Street, uh huh.
It was.
All right, so that's not the case here, but there's applications, but, you know, there's no one here objecting to it. The signs, orange sign's been up, nobody objecting, I guess it's okay with the neighbors.
Didn't we have a letter of opposition for this one? Or did we?
I don't know. Do we have a letter of opposition for this one?
Yes.
We do?
Yes.
One letter.
Was it just based on generalities, or was it, I think, because they're not specifically calling out problems with a specific short-term rental, they were just talking about what Mike's been talking about, impacts to established infants.
One second, it was in your supplement, I apologize.
Sorry.
Mr. Tahan.
Could someone read the letters of?
That's what I was gonna ask.
I'm trying to get it, I'm sorry, it was in your supplement and I.
Well, he's looking at, could I?
I don't know, your red light is blinking.
I know, I know. I'll wait till it gets reset, so I want my full, I want my full time. So I live pretty close to this. I live just off Great Neck Road. Matter of fact, in one of the aerials, they showed the Food Lion Anchored Shopping Center that I used to be a partner in. I've got friends that live in this neighborhood. I'm surprised I haven't heard from them. Like Mike said, it's very surprising. It's a very family-oriented neighborhood. I've done trick-or-treating back here with friends, with my kids, big Fourth of July parade, done that. It's a very family-oriented neighborhood. I am quite frankly shocked that there isn't more opposition. I'm looking forward to hearing about this letter. But I do feel that these short-term rentals are changing the dynamics of these neighborhoods. And this is a great neighborhood. It really is. I mean, it's in, I mean, it is a very desirable place to live. The people here enjoy the beach, they enjoy the park. It's very pedestrian-friendly. Introducing somebody new to a street, you know, new people multiple times a week to a street, I would not be okay with that if I lived there. I'm not really okay with it where I live, you know, down the street with it happening in this neighborhood. I just think it changes the dynamics. And I know that, I mean, this is something we're gonna talk about more and more as we revisit this, but it is, it is, it is changing things. I'm just, again, shocked that we don't have more opposition. But anyway, Mr. Tahan.
So the letter is very succinct. The first email was just no. And the second email says, I'm against having a 10-person short-term rental next to me. I am alone most of the time. I have four short-term rentals on the opposite side of Oak Street. Enough is enough. The two-bedroom, one-bath had 15 people there during May. There is no way to control this mess without me saying no. If this, if the picture, and we did not receive the picture through the email, comes through, it is a view from my dining room of the entrance to 2305. I am at 2303. So this is a neighbor directly adjacent.
So here we go again. And one of the reasons, Robin, so you know, because most of us here have sort of had the birthing pains with this, is here we have another person that has started to operate in anticipation because they want to go ahead and get in the season without the approval from us.
And that's a reason I would deny it.
And so on those reasons, I deny him. Because I'm thinking, if you are already not following our guidelines and procedures and our regulations, you're not gonna follow anything. I mean, I just, I just, that's sort of where I go with this. And then on top of it, did he just say they were four across the street?
He said there were four that are being, that are registered.
Right.
That are being registered, so.
Not registered, that are not.
That are not registered. And on your point of it being such an old, established neighborhood, which most of our neighborhoods are in the city of Virginia Beach to begin with, I mean, we lowered the speed limit for this corridor here.
To 35 miles an hour.
To 35 miles an hour because of the amount of families and children that are going up and down this road. And that it wasn't, the speed limit wasn't safe for that area. So, yeah.
This for staff. Do we know that for sure that they have been operating? We don't know that?
Your best bet would probably to be to ask the applicant if they have been operating.
I'd like to do that. And also, do we know for, well, I guess you don't know for a fact that there's four more operating illegally across the street? Do we ever find that kind of stuff out? Are we able to find that stuff out, or?
If it's reported to us. The problem is, is a lot of times, people will have the complaint about the use, but they won't call it in or they won't tell anyone. So a lot of it just comes out here before we do any enforcement. So we do check it before they come to us.
If they were registered with the Commissioner of Revenue, well, would it be shown on that map?
That is, yes, that's that.
That's what the gray.
That gray, lilac color is.
So they're operating, they're not registered or approved. If they indeed are operating, they haven't either, they've not applied with us and they've not gotten registration with Commissioner of Revenue. And is it true now they can't register with the Commissioner until they get a conditional use permit now?
No, they can register.
They can register. Okay, so they haven't done anything, they're just, okay.
Yes.
That's my question real quick. When they do come for an application, they do know that they can't do the short-term rental until they're approved and registered, correct? They, I mean, I know y'all do a lot, you guys are doing a great job, but that is told to them. They cannot operate until.
That is correct. We tell them that they do not have approval to operate, so.
Okay, but I would like to ask the applicant if he has been operating.
Mr. Dodd, are you available for questions?
Yes, I am, we are. My wife, Christina, and I are present.
Mr. Dodd, have you been operating your short-term rental since you registered? Or before reg, or since you registered?
We are not doing short-term rentals there.
Doing short-term rentals at all, and you have not done any there since, or at all?
Short-term rentals across the street.
Okay, thank you.
So you owns one across the street? Okay.
Mr. Whitney, to you.
Yes.
Isn't there a strong neighborhood civic league out there? Very strong.
Yes, very strong.
Tight-knit, we hear a lot, development comes on, we hear a lot.
That's why I said I am shocked that we haven't heard more. And I don't, and I don't know if it's, and I haven't gone out and, yeah, I haven't polled the community and asked them, why are you not, you know, supporting or opposing something? But it is surprising. It's a very well-organized neighborhood, more organized than the neighborhood I live in.
Well, and I think too, some of this is that nobody's been out and about. I mean, we're in the COVID world.
Well, don't they get notified, Mr. Dodd?
Not everybody.
No.
But there's an orange sign in front of the house.
By mail.
The adjacent property owners will get mailed, and then, of course, there's the sign in front of the house as well, so.
And people are walking to the beach. I mean, I, I mean, I, this is, this is tough. It really is. And I, I don't know why the neighborhood is not opposing it.
Okay. Anybody else?
I guess this is why we're gonna have this workshop this afternoon, I guess. Can we just put everything on hold till after?
I know.
That would make it easy.
It would be.
Make it a lot easier.
That's gonna be about eight hours long.
Okay.
Not for this fall.
Well, why don't we, we need a motion. I think we're.
Will we approve this application?
I'll second.
Okay. Michelle, would you call for the vote, please?
The only question I had, those letters of opposition, if they had not, if the owner says he has not been operating, the letters of opposition, are they related to some of the other ones that are in operation? Or how valid are they?
Good question.
It's a good question.
It refers to this property specifically, the one letter of opposition, because it is the direct neighbor. But they did reference that there are other ones nearby.
This may be the last one that gets done.
Maybe. All right. You want to call for the vote?
Sure, this motion is to approve the application. If you are in favor of the motion, say yes. And if you're opposed, say no. Mr. Alcaraz?
Yes.
Mr. Costin?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Horstley?
No.
Mr. Emmon?
No.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Weiner?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
No.
By a recorded vote of six, four, and three against, Agenda Item 14 is hereby recommended for denial, for approve, I'm sorry, by the planning commission.
Madam Chair, we understand that Ms. Alderman is back, so we can return to Item 12. This item is Item 12, Application of David Lucas for a Conditional Use Permit for Short-Term Rental at 505 Barberton Drive in the Beach District. Applicant's representative is Sierra Alderman, who will present virtually. Ms. Alderman, you have up to 10 minutes to present the request. Please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. I hope my, my audio is better. My name is Sierra Alderman. I'm representing David Lucas at 505 Barberton Drive. This is a two-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bathroom place. It has met all of the requirements. We have plenty of parking. So far, we have had great people in, families that are coming for vacation, so they're often not even in the unit. They're out and about enjoying our beautiful city. We, we check all the boxes, and so we hope that we are able to proceed with our short-term rental as we have gone through all of the necessary steps in order to make it happen. I did just wanna kind of use this time a little bit too to talk about some of the points that were just discussed. As far as operating before being approved, I, I would love if this could be a, a point of conversation because I, I have a few other places in the area. And, and when I called back in January, and some of, some of my places, it has been since January, where we've been waiting for, for a yes or no. And there's been deferrals because of the conditional, because of a coronavirus and all of that. And so we've been waiting for, for a significant amount of time, six months, for, for some of these approvals and still are going through hoops and going through this process. But that being said, when I called in in January, and I said, hey, I'm, I'm helping others start their places, am I allowed to, once I register with the Commissioner of Revenue, operate the short-term rental? And then if we get denied, we, we stop that point. And I said, yes, that's exactly how you do it. You make sure you register. You have the sign in the front yard. You're good to go until you get approved or denied. And so that is how I've understood. And so we have followed all of, everything that we needed to do, from my understanding. And of course, we are not trying to not follow any rules. We believe what was set from the city has been followed. So just touching on that point. And then as well as just short-term rentals in general, I love the ability, the, the owner in this one in particular lives in the back unit. This is a duplex. So he lives in the back and he's able to rent out the front. So he's there to, if there's any issues. This one only allows four people. So it's quiet. We don't have any party issues. We've had very, very good renters. And I, like I said, I've been doing this for a while now, so I'm very strict with who I allow. And I have a strict vetting process for no parties. Again, it's mostly families. So I, I, my first and foremost consideration is the neighbors. I, I'm fully aware that if they aren't happy, then no one's happy. And so I make it my priority to make, to make the integrity of the neighborhood. Also, we are paying 8% in, in occupancy taxes. And that goes right back to the city in order to, to develop, again, our, our beautiful city. We're, we're glad to have this opportunity. It is rental income. I love to be able to provide that, especially most of my people are military members. So I love to be able to help them in their endeavors. But that being said, we, we do believe we followed all of the necessary things we needed to do. And so we've paid the $360 application fee. You know, we've gone through what we believe the city has required. And so it's, it's a little bit hard getting denied for kind of some of these things that are coming up about the changes. That shouldn't be our fault if there's any lack of organization. I know you all are working very hard, and I know this is very frustrating, and I'm sure for you as well. But I just want clarity so that I can best represent my clients. And so that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
I have a question for you. You said you have clients. Are you in the real estate business? And how many short-term rentals do you have?
Yes, so that is correct. I do have my real estate license. I, my LLC is Host My Home LLC. So I represent my clients through the LLC, but I do also have my real estate license through Exit Realty Central.
How many short-term rentals do you represent?
Apologize. In this area, I have four short-term rentals. And then I have a couple that I co-host in other states, just digital management. So a total of four here and four in other states.
Locally based?
The four here, yes, they're, they're locally based. I'm here. So I, I live here in Virginia Beach.
Thank you. And so I just want to clarify. So did you, did you say, so you, you said you misunderstood city staff as far as when they say you're good to go, you assume that means that you can go ahead and start renting your short-term rental? Is that, I just want to make sure I'm clear. That's what you perceived?
Absolutely. Fair question. Yes, I, I believed. So when I saw the, the rules online about the conditional use permit and all, all of the requirements I needed to do, one of the first steps was to register with the Commissioner of Revenue. So before we started operating, did all the steps required, put out the application, put the sign in the yard, registered so that we're paying taxes. And yes, my understanding was, when I called the Commissioner of Revenue, I said, once I'm paying in taxes and we have the application in, am I okay to do the short-term rental until we get approved or denied for the, the conditional use permit? And my understanding was that, that answer was yes.
And so let me just continue with this train of thought I, I've got. So, so that was the answer that you received for all previous, the other, the other three short-term rentals that you have in Virginia Beach. So that's the way you understood that that's how that operates?
Yes, that's absolutely correct.
And that this is your business? Leasing short-term rentals.
I'm sorry. I must have missed that question. I think it was kind of muted and unmuted, so it was muted when you were asking that question.
This is your business to lease short-term rentals for the owners of the property, correct?
Yes, that is absolutely correct.
I have a question. Have, were you, have you been paying taxes through the Commissioner of Revenue prior to submitting the application?
No, there was no taxes to be paid because they weren't short-term rentals before. And so we started paying taxes the second that we got approved and we started allowing renters and we started paying the applicable taxes.
What did, what were you doing first? Did you do the application first, then do the, the taxes, and then contacted the Commissioner of Revenue?
Um, to be honest, I'm not sure if it was the application, then the Commissioner of Revenue, or if it was flip-flopped. I mean, we do them at the same time usually. Once they start filling out the application, I have them go to the Commissioner of Revenue. I mean, truthfully, at the same time, but I'm really not sure who, I, I think one of them, it might have been this one, where they did have an order where you needed to do the application first, then go to the Commissioner of Revenue. Then that was your, okay to, to start paying taxes. I think that's how it worked, but I'm sorry, I'm a little bit foggy in some of the details.
I'm completely confused with the process. It looks to me like, I thought they were supposed to apply for a use permit. They can register with the Commissioner of Revenue, but that does not give them the authority to start business.
That's correct.
The only time they can start business is once city council approves the use permit, which has to go by through us.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, so somebody's been given some wrong information or somebody interpreted something wrong.
And I don't know. I kind of got, the second time she explained it, I got it. It was the Commissioner of the Revenue, and he may not be understanding the process. I, I, the first time I thought it was owning. So I'm not sure exactly who gave her that information.
Well, why don't we ask?
Go ahead.
Now, just a question for the applicant. Who, who told you, what, what office were you talking to regarding permission to go ahead?
I do believe Commissioner of Revenue. As I said, I've done it for a few different places, so it, it had been my understanding. But yeah, we are certainly not trying to operate illegally or, you know, we're trying to go through all the necessary steps. And so I, I'm disappointed if I misunderstood because I do believe it was the Commissioner of Revenue we spoke with, which may not have been the correct person. But online, I don't know, it, it was, it was just a little bit confusing. And I just want to make sure I'm clear so that when I'm representing future clients, we're doing it the right way. So hopefully, we can, we can clear that up for me as well.
And you start building before you get the permit. That doesn't work well.
I don't know. Thank you. Um, wait, we're.
Madam Chair, there is one speaker signed up to comment, Sean Myers, who will make comments virtually. Mr. Myers, you have up to three minutes. Please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Sean Myers, can you hear me? Speaking, Sean Myers. Hello?
Mr. Myers, please proceed.
Um, I represent my client, the owner of 501 and 503 Barberton Drive, Brendan Nelson. I am a real estate broker with Coastal Group Incorporated. I managed that property for them. And just a, a few brief comments. Kind of like just prior, two prior speakers ago, the Lake Station condos and the issue that they were having there, those are issues that we definitely do not want to see on our property and have to deal with. Tenants that we have in the property, this is a residential setting and not a vacation setting. And we do want to make sure that our tenants, you know, right to quiet enjoyment, quiet enjoyment of their property is not infringed upon by having vacationers next door. And additionally, next door, the properties very close together. There's nothing really at all separating them other than some trees. There's no, I guess, lack of private enclosures, a deck or a fence or anything like that separating it. Everything is just wide open right there. And folks can come and go, and there's no real privacy there with that, at your traffic. And another question that I would ask would be, if the gentleman who owns 505 and 507 Barberton, if he moves out of that rear unit, will he be renting that out short-term and will we have to deal with additional traffic as well? Really, that's about all that I have to say about it. We're more concerned about protecting our tenants and our clients, and they're right to quiet enjoyment. And, you know, just want to point out that this is not a vacation area. This is a residential area. It's not sand bridge. It's not down at the oceanfront. Not those vacation rentals that have been grandfathered in that were managed by like ERA Atkinson and such like that. This is a residential setting, and we'd like to see it remain so if we can. All I have at this time.
Do you have a question for him? Yes.
Have there been concerns with the renters that have been on the property since they started operating earlier this year?
To me, I've, to this point, I've had zero comments from either tenant in either of my units over there. I don't know that they were aware of, and I was certainly not aware of, that unit being rented out on a short-term basis. But I have not had any complaints to this point.
Any other questions for the, for the speaker? Okay.
Okay. Madam Chair, there are no more speakers. We'd like to ask if there are any speakers present in the lobby, Building 19, or in the chamber that would like to speak. Anyone? There are no more known speakers.
All right, I'm gonna close this to our planning commissioners and open the floor for any discussion. Yes, Robin?
I'm on the website regarding the ordinance. And it says that, except as noted below, all property owners must obtain a CUP in order to use residences they own as short-term rentals. Would, I, that, I think that's clear.
I think it's clear too, which concerns me because this is her. This is she, this is what she does for a living.
She does it for a living. You'd expect her to know.
All right. Do you have a motion? Done?
I'll, I'll just, I'll just make a comment too, that the short-term rentals originated from people who had homes and they'd like to rent it out a little bit during the year. And it's, and the, the fear came in some of us as we were developing this, that this was going to develop into a, a business where people were gonna buy homes and convert them for nothing but that. And they were, the, the people weren't gonna live in them, in, you know. And I think that's exactly what's happened. That's when we, that's the reason we've been inundated with all these short-term rental applications is people see this as an excellent business opportunity, and rightfully so, I guess. But the, the premises was, in the beginning, was people had homes and they liked to be able to rent them out and for a few weeks a year and do that. But now we, we're getting, it's, it's gotten way out of hand. And I guess that's the reason we, we, council is to ask us to, to relook at this whole thing. So I, at, at this point, I, I don't guess we have much basis to turn this one down, except for the fact I don't like it's taking place.
Well, she's operating without.
Right.
Their CUP and.
So if you want, if you want a motion, I'll give you a motion. I'll make a motion to deny.
Do I need a second?
I'll second it. And I, but I want to add to what Don was saying, and the idea of, of the concept, original concept, that people would live in it, they would be there to better monitor what goes on when they rent the, the property. That, that's, that's a big part of it, it being part of a neighborhood. I'll, I'm gonna second the motion by Don.
You call for the vote, please.
Sure. This motion is to not.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, John.
Did you say the owner was, was living there? The owner lives in the back unit?
Yes, she said he lived in the back.
He does live in the back.
Yes. If the council denies the application, is there a period of time for which the applicant can reapply?
Yes, it's one year.
One year. Because my, I mean, I think this is exactly the type of person I would want doing a short-term rental, someone that lives on the property. It's more that I would advise him to find a new.
Person to run.
Right. So I'd like, I feel like we're penalizing the applicant. But this, in theory, is the type of person that I would want to support in having a short-term rental because they live there.
Right.
I'll say, there's, you know, Jason, it doesn't seem like they've had, had necessarily issues with this as, I mean, even though it's been operating illegally, that they haven't even known that it is a short-term rental to a certain extent. So, I mean, he obviously does know, but he didn't mention that there was, that there were, had been, you know, any issues up to this point.
No, it's, it is. Yes.
I'm torn on this one. Yeah, I know she does this for a living. Yes, I mean, you read it right off the, the website. It says what to do. I mean, anybody can see that. I, I, I mean, I don't know. I don't know what I'm gonna do.
Well, I'm concerned that she has four of them. And this is her business and she's a, and she and she, what was it? Host home? And she, what was it, Host Home? Host Home.
She's kind of a rental agent, really.
Right, she's a rental agent, and she operates in two states, and I feel actually, unfortunately, if you're running a business and you're running it across, in two states, you certainly would understand how each city worked and how they were set up according to, you know, operational standards and regulations. So, that's, that's unfortunate, is my problem here with this. All right, well, we have a motion on the floor and a second, so...
All right, the motion is to deny this application. If you are in favor of the motion, say yes, and if you're opposed, say no. Mr. Alcaraz?
Yes.
Mr. Costin?
No.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Horstley?
Yes.
Mr. Enman?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
No.
Mr. Wall?
No.
Mr. Weiner?
No.
And Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
What was that?
Yes.
Okay. By a recorded vote of five, four, and four against, Agenda Item 12 is hereby recommended for denial by the Planning Commission.
Madam Chair, the last item on today's regular agenda is Agenda Item 19, Nicholas Santiago for a Conditional Use Permit for a Short-Term Rental at 905 12th Street in the Beach District. The applicant is Nicholas Santiago, who will present virtually. Mr. Santiago, you have up to 10 minutes to present the request. Please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Good afternoon. This is Nick Santiago. I'm proposing to use a, use my home as a short-term rental at 905 12th Street. It's located less than a mile from the beach, at the oceanfront. I'm currently in the military and required to leave often for training, mostly up to five weeks to six months. And instead of leaving my house empty, I'm hoping to get some extra income by renting it out as a short-term rental while I'm away. I've spoken to all my neighbors, I've talked, had talked with all of them, most of who rent around me, and everyone seems okay with it. It's a very nice neighborhood, and I'm just looking to get some extra income when I'm away. That's all I have to say.
Yes.
Are you living in your home now?
Yes, I am.
Robin?
Who will be managing the renters while you're at training?
I have a buddy's wife, who's been doing this for over two years now, and she will be helping me manage my Airbnb.
Is she with host.com?
No, she is not.
Anybody else? Do we have a speaker?
Madam Chair, there are no speakers. We'd like to ask if there are any speakers present in the lobby, Building 19, or in the chamber that would like to speak. Anyone? There are no more known speakers.
Um, but I'm going to close this and open it up to the Commissioners for discussion. So, if you want to tell Don, go up.
I'm just confirming that this is the one that we, we got information, that there are two pending applications in, across the street from this property.
So, maybe we should put the map up?
Yes, the map, please. Expand it a little bit.
I will. Yes, Don?
If I might, I, I think this is, one of the reasons why we established this, was to allow people like this gentleman who's in the military, who is going to be deployed, and he would like to earn some income from a home that he is occupying while he's here. I think that's one of the reasons that we put in short-term rentals. I would, I think I have to support this one, I can't see any reason not to support it.
So, I just live down the street, and I have not received any calls or emails on opposition.
Well, it's pretty obvious that a lot of people in the community support the idea, since we have two pending applications and nobody objecting, so I would support the application for that.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Right, we have a second from Ms. Klein. Would you call for the vote, please?
Sure. This motion is to approve the application. If you are in favor of the motion, say yes, and if you're opposed, say no. Mr. Alcaraz?
Yes.
Mr. Costin?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Horstley?
Yes.
Mr. Enman?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Weiner?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
By a recorded vote of nine, four, and zero against Agenda Item 19 is hereby recommended for approval by the Planning Commission.
Madam Chair, that was the last item on the agenda. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the Planning Commission's webpage within 10 days. That website is vbgov.com/pc. The applications not deferred or withdrawn will be scheduled for a future City Council meeting. Staff will let the applicants know when that will be, and those dates will be posted on the Planning Commission's webpage. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and thanks, everybody, for participating in today's agenda, and I will call this meeting adjourned.